In with roll call. Yalitchechko? Matt Ferguson?
Present.
Thank you. Suzanne Sekora Ludwig? Chris Stellatella? Ivan Adorno?
Here.
Diana Lopez?
Here.
Zach Wright?
Here.
Anthony Camione II? George Shadid? Bob Cardika?
I'm here.
Manny Castaneda?
Here.
Chairman Castaneda, if you don't mind, I just want to run through the the role of the absences again, just in case anybody is on and I didn't hear them.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Sure. Yalitchechko? Suzanne Sekora Ludwig? Chris Stellatella? Anthony Camione? George Shadid? Okay, so to be clear, I heard no responses from any of those persons. We have six voting members in attendance tonight.
Mr. Chairman, if we may interrupt, this is Arvind Ito.
Yes.
Dominguez, did any of the board members identify themselves as and are calling either user two or user three?
Um, give me one second here. I was, I was too focused on my, on my paper to to do that, to, to mark them. Trying to see, all right. Are, is, are there any board members who are calling in over the phone? Doesn't seem to be, Mr. Ito.
Okay, there's also user, call in user four. So, Mr. Chairman, perhaps those individuals can mute.
Yep. Calling user four is, is Dave Steiers' phone. I had to mute it for, because of the echo, but he can't hear us without being on the phone.
So, Mr. Chairman, if perhaps those individuals can mute themselves. Call user two and user three.
Yes.
Can get them muted. I think, Dan, you can mute them on your side, right?
Ah, yeah, I, they, they may not know that they're caller user two or three, so I'll just mute them over here on, on my end.
Okay. And with the six we have, we have quorum, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then, let's, let's continue. Let's start with the, our City of New Brunswick Planning Board, Board Meeting for February 7th, 2022. Mr. Dominguez, if you could please read the public announcement.
Certainly. Please be advised, sorry, please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gives sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the City of New Brunswick Planning Board, has been filed with City Clerk and has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted on the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, has been transmitted to the official newspapers for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive, no, that's, that's old. The planning board intends to meet on a regular schedule and meet at the guidelines of the Open Public Meeting Act by utilizing teleconferencing and video systems. Public participation at public meetings has been revised, and the public may participate through a conference call-in system. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call-in system through the phone numbers and access codes, transmitted in the above notice to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted in the back vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows. During public comment periods, I will first note, first read public comment issued to the board and those on the call-in lines who have interested in addressing the board will be first organized by last name and then called upon to speak. All organized members of the public will speak once and for no more than five minutes in any given public meeting portion. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and I will notify you that your time has expired. Public needing assistance accessing the call-in number should call the Planning Department at 732-745-5050.
Thank you. Move on to the next section to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. We have a following now, a section for executive session, update of planning board on litigation filed by Commandments Family LP. Mr. Ito, can you give a bit more information and then we'll go into executive session?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, there is a resolution that would need to be, sorry, a resolution that would need to be adopted to go into executive session. There are nine circumstances under the Open Public Meetings Act under which the Board may go into executive session or closed session. One of those would be there is being threatened for taking litigation in this matter. There is pending litigation. Pitting a lot of, not sure who it's coming from.
It's caller five, if you can please mute yourself. Thank you.
I muted them.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Continue, Mr.
Thank you. So, the board would need to act on a motion with a second and a roll call vote to go into executive session. I will advise the board members in executive session, status of litigation. No action is contemplated, so no action will be taken once we come out of executive session.
Great, thank you. Can I again therefore get a motion to go into executive session? This is my biggest motion.
Excuse me, folks, I just want to jump in. I was just setting up to do the the separate room for the executive session. The, the go-to meeting system is being used by another meeting. I am in the process of setting a breakout session here in the, in the WebEx system, so just, just bear with me one second. And I'm just, it should automatically, once it's ready, move all of you in, but I just wanted to put that out there before anybody started leaving this session, hoping to log into the other one.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. While you figure that out, let's go through our procedure here, and can I ask again for the motion?
Go ahead, Ivan.
This is Ivan. I'll make a motion to go to executive session.
And I'll second. This is Matt Ferguson.
All right. Oh, I guess Mr. Dominguez is working on this. Mr. Ito, would you be able to do roll call?
No, I can do roll.
Oh, okay.
You'll, I'll just ask for a second before we, we move over. All right, Matt Ferguson?
Yes.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Mano Castaneda?
Yes.
All right, give me one second. I just want to make sure you didn't miss anybody. Okay. Let me see if this works. Okay.
Dan, should we join this?
Yes, yes, if it, if it prompts you to join, join.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Alexa. This is my first time attending a planning board meeting. I've been in two commissions for my hometown in the past, but we've never had an executive board meeting. Could someone just fill me in on what happens in that meeting? And, um, yeah, basically.
Alexa, in just a few minutes, the, the board attorney is going to come back and he can answer a question for you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
I believe we're all back. Mr. Dominguez, if you can please take roll?
Certainly. Yalitchechko? Matt Ferguson?
Present.
Suzanne Sekora Ludwig? Chris Stellatella? Ivan Adorno?
Here.
Diana Lopez?
Here.
Zach Wright? Zach Wright? Zach, did you?
You're on mute, Zach.
Oh, fantastic. Present.
All right, thank you. Anthony Camione? Let's see. Anthony, you there? I, I see you, but can you, can you speak? I can't, I can't hear you.
And it's refreshing, he might have just lost internet connection for a second.
Yeah, it, it has like a flag that says that he's got like a low bandwidth issue or something. All right, uh, well, what do I do? Do I just proceed as if he's not here, like?
Then I'll go, go through the other names and then.
All right, George Shadid? Bob Cardika?
Here.
Matt Cast, Manny Castaneda?
Here.
Let's see. That's still the same six unless, uh, Mr. Camione can sort out his connection. Mr. Camione, if you can hear us, because I, I don't think anybody else can hear you, because I can't hear you, um, you could consider trying to get off the computer and call in over your phone. Oh, there you are.
I'm back.
Okay. Present.
Present.
All right, that's seven.
Great, thank you. All right, moving with the agenda to item five, minutes of the board's January 10th, 2022 meeting.
All right, eligible voters are Ivan Adorno, Diana Lopez, Zach Wright, Anthony Camione, Bob Cardika, and Manny Castaneda.
Great, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Who, who, who motioned?
Ivan.
Ivan, all right. Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Yes.
Zach Wright? You might be muted again, Zach.
Trying to stop the feedback loop, but yes.
Anthony Camione?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Manny Castaneda?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions of memorialization. A Colgate Paper Stock Company, Inc., 12 Industrial Drive, Block 597.03, Lot 1, PB-2021-08.
Same eligible voters.
All right, can I get a motion? Or are we, is there anything to discuss here, Mr. Dominguez?
I don't believe so. It's up to the board if there's anything to discuss.
I'm moved to, uh, to accept the resolution.
Can I get a second?
Ivan, I'll second.
Thank you.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Diana Lopez?
Sorry, yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Anthony Camione?
Yes.
Bob Cardika?
Yes.
Manny Castaneda?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to section seven, appointment of minor subdivision committee by chairperson. And so I'll take this opportunity to to appoint Ivan Adorno to the position. Barring any, any issue from my Mr. Adorno.
No issues, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving now to section eight, public hearings. Uh, we have our first one, Johnson &amp; Johnson, One Johnson &amp; Johnson Plaza, Block 36.01, Lot 1.01 PB-2021-06. Site plan amendment to relocate the previously approved gasoline storage system, Site plan amendment to relocate the previously approved gasoline storage system, which was approved by the planning board on October 4th, 2021. One of the items of relief granted in that application was a front yard setback variance allowing the system to have an 84.9-foot front yard setback from Albany Street. The applicant is requesting to relocate the system such that it will now have a 78.4-foot front yard setback from Albany Street. Zoning District 01, 0-1, General Office, James Clarkman III Esquire presenting. Before we get started, I will have to recuse myself for a potential conflict of interest. And so I will ask our vice chair to take lead and with the presentation. And then I, I don't have any particular conflicts or potential conflicts with the rest of the meeting, and then I will resume after this particular application is heard. Are there any other board members that might have a potential conflict?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Castaneda. I am going to recuse myself from this matter. I also recused myself on October 4th. I have an existing relationship with the Clarkin &amp; Mignolo Law Firm, so I am going to also go on silent. I will rejoin for item B and the rest of the meeting as I have no conflicts or potential conflicts pass this matter.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cardica, it's your show.
Thank you, this is Bob Cardica. Do we have a quorum now? We do. We do?
Yeah, yeah, we have five.
Okay, then I guess we can turn this over to Mr. Clarkin.
Actually, thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. My name is Kevin Morse, Woodbridge, New Jersey. I am appearing this evening on behalf of the applicant Johnson &amp; Johnson, and I am covering the file for Mr. Clarkin, who is the counsel of record for this applicant. Mr. Clarkin is presently on his feet on the continuation of another matter, and he's asked me to step in his place to put this matter forward. And as the chairman accurately described the application, it's exactly what happened. This was approved, as the board knows, back in October of last year. The gasoline storage system, since that time, construction had commenced. During the course of construction and excavation, a foundation was determined to exist in a place where it was not thought to be. And that being the case, there has to be a adjustment of the location of the gasoline storage system. And hence, we are back before the board seeking an amended site plan approval, really for the adjustment of one front yard variance that was previously granted and as described by the chairman. We'll need some further relief in that regard. Other than that, and you will hear testimony to this effect, what you saw back in October of last year, for all intents and purposes, is the same plan. So I have three witnesses available to me. I have Betty Ritz, who is a representative of the applicant. Now, she's not here. I don't intend on calling her, but I wanted the board to be aware that we do have an applicant's representative present if necessary. The two witnesses I intend on calling are Mr. David Stires, who is our professional engineer, and then Mr. James Clark in the fourth, who is our professional planner. So if Mr. Stires could be sworn, please.
Dan, do you? Yeah, sorry. Mr. Stires, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
David Stires, S.T.I.R.E.S.
Mr. Stires, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Or is yours?
Thank you, Mr. Stires. You are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey in good standing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. How long? If I may, this is Arvin Ito. Mr. Morse, sorry to interrupt. Mr. Stires, you've appeared before this board a number of occasions, have you not?
I have, and for Johnson &amp; Johnson several times.
And your credentials have not changed anyway since the last time you were accepted by this board as an expert in the field of civil engineering. Is that correct? I think we lost your volume. Either that or unfrozen.
No, I don't hear him either.
Probably shouldn't have interrupted.
My credentials have not changed.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I imagine that since his credentials have not changed since the last time he appeared, that his expertise remains, and the board can accept him if it so chooses, as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
And that would be the applicant's request.
I agree you can proceed, Mr. Stires.
Right now, Mr. Stires, you reviewed the engineering drawings that are before the board this evening, is that right? Can? You've also visited the site, I understand, on a number of occasions, and you're fully familiar with the site.
I'm familiar with the whole campus.
And you're also aware of the prior approval granted back in October of last year for this particular matter, the gasoline storage system, correct?
Yes, I am.
Right, can you describe for the board the location or the relocation of the new tank based upon this foundation that was located?
Yes, the tanks were going to be set back from Johnson Drive at 88.5 feet and these streets, 84.9 feet. On the Albany side of the existing underground parking area, we found a foundation conflicted with the proposed tanks lifted directly towards Albany, six and a half feet. So we're requesting a 78.4-foot setback where 100, 100 feet is required.
All right.
All the fencing, the dimensions, the landscaping, the drainage is identical to what was originally proposed.
And all the safety features and venting will be incorporated into the system in the new location, is that correct?
Yes, it's state of the art.
Are there any stormwater changes that are necessary in connection with this relocation?
No, the, the system is going to be as originally designed.
Okay, is there any change in the total, total impervious coverage as a result of this site plan amendment request?
There isn't. It was just merely the six and a half foot ship.
Will the project continue or this proposed development to comply with the New Jersey Solid Waste Management statutes?
Yes, it will.
Right now, the city, as you know, had sustained a significant impact from flooding from Hurricane Ida. With that in mind, will the new tank location create any danger or any situation make it more susceptible to flooding?
The area in question is closer to Johnson Drive, and that was one of the reasons we couldn't push the tank around the corner. And I had talked to the construction manager shortly after Ida, and they actually went out there and took pictures during the event, and this area stayed high and dry.
And in particular, even though we're requesting this adjustment of an additional six feet toward Albany Street, will this application maintain the six-foot-high aluminum fence with horizontal slats, all the holly bushes, and at their heights as previously proposed?
Identical, yes, identical.
Okay, now, as you're aware, the city professionals had issued two review memorandums. I direct your attention first to the February 4, 2022 memo issued by Big Now Planning Consultants on behalf of the board. If I direct your attention to number nine, Plan Review Comments. Really, the only item in there I think we need to have you do is verify the screening fence will continue to fully screen the exposed height of the structure. Is that true?
Out of the ground about five feet, and the fences, six feet five, and the hollies are about four and a half feet, and they will grow up higher than the tank.
And the applicant is prepared to comply with the rest of the same review comments, some of which you've already handled vis a vis your testimony, is that correct?
Yes, yeah, I don't see anything on there.
Thank you. Now, I also want to direct your attention to the memorandum issued by the Department of Engineering dated February 3rd, 2022. I wanted to recognize the memorandum. There's actually no comment or no objection from the City Department of Engineering, but we reviewed that, and I wanted the board to be aware of that as well. Right, so unless there are questions from a technical perspective of Mr. Stires, which we would invite now, I would move on to call my next witness at the board's pleasure.
I just have a quick question. This is Bob Cardica. What, what's the reason that you're not just removing this obstruction instead?
The foundation is part of that underground parking structure. So, you know, we have to honor that and stay away from that.
Okay, I see. Thank you. Is any other testimony being presented?
Yeah, as, as, as long as you folks are willing to release Mr. Stires, he will stand ready through the conclusion of the hearing should any questions come up. But if there's no questions of the board at this time, I would ask him to stand down for the moment and call James Clark in the fourth, who is our professional planner.
Okay, hold on one second. Are there any other questions from board professionals or board members? Hearing none, proceed, please.
Thank you. Your next call, James Clark in the fourth, if he could be sworn, please.
Mr. Clarkin, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
James Clarkin, C.L.A.R.K.I.N.
Mr. Clarkin, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Clarkin, you're a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I understand that you have testified before this board on prior occasions and been accepted as an expert in your field, that of professional planning, is that correct?
That is all correct, yes.
So, Mr. Vice Chairman, I would ask that you accept Mr. Clarkin again as our expert with regard to professional planning without me having to go through his curriculum vitae for the board's consideration.
Mr. Clarkin, your credentials are accepted. Please proceed.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Clarkin, you had the opportunity to review this application along with the engineering, planning reports issued by the board professionals that we just discussed, correct?
Correct, yes.
You're also aware of the approval the board granted back on October of 2020 run last year regarding the gasoline storage system?
Yes, I testified there as well, so I'm familiar with the matter.
Right, and you've heard the applicant's engineer describe the adjustment to the gasoline storage system, namely requiring it to be moved six feet closer than originally anticipated due to the building foundation, which cannot be removed, correct?
Correct, yep.
And you've heard the engineering testimony confirming that the landscaping, slot fencing will all be in place consistent with the prior application to appropriately screen the gasoline storage system despite this plan amendment, correct?
Correct. All those items will still be in place as originally testified.
As you heard the introductory remarks, subject site is in the city's 01 General Office Zone, is that right?
Correct.
And the one variance that we're seeking adjustment for is an adjustment to the prior front yard setback variance that was granted last October, namely seeking to increase that by an additional six feet, is that right?
Yes, that's the only modification we need for Albany Street, the front yard setback.
And that being the case, originally it was approved at 84.9 feet, and with this proposed amendment, we would be seeking a front yard variance to locate it 78.4 feet again from Albany Street, is that correct?
Yes, correct. And since zone calls for 100-foot setback, we still need the variance.
You know, I understand that you have an opinion that the proposed relief amended site plan approval and this adjusted both variants can be granted under what's the known as the flexible C2 provision of New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, is that right?
That is right, and I believe the overall benefits of the project substantially outweigh any detriments. And as the engineer testified, we can't physically locate it because of the foundation. And then previously, when I testified last time, we couldn't get any closer because of the office tower. But once again, as I testified previously, the approving this modified front yard setback will still further to municipal land use law objectives, namely B and I. So B is to safely secure from fire, flood, and panic and other natural and man-made disasters. So we're still putting forth that since the city art facility and system will still safely provide fuel for the company to operate on site, but avoid any spill issues. And then finally, purpose I is still promoted because of the desirable visual environment that we're creating with the horizontal slats, the fencing, the bushes and trees, all those will remain the same. And also, only a bit of the tank will be above ground, so no one will really see it. So purpose I is still furthered as well.
Now, are the same goals and objectives of the city's master plan furthered by the granting of these or this revised variance in this amended?
Yes, purpose of the 01 zone is to provide modern office space while preserving the integrity of the character and the pedestrian scale of the downtown central business districts. So having this modern storage system for gasoline is pretty common for a large office campuses and modern office facilities. So this allows for continuity of operations in the event of emergency or disaster. So permitting the revised variance will allow this system to be constructed and upgrade the backup systems for J&amp;J headquarters, thereby continuing modern spaces as noted in your master plan. This is still the case, and the integrity of the downtown central business district is preserved via the screening and the fencing.
All right, now, you've also reviewed the application vis a vis the negative criteria, is that right?
That is right. So as I mentioned previously, the positives from this development substantially outweigh any negatives as we are providing a necessary upgrade to the site to modernize the system and the office space. So I see no negatives or detriment to the site, neighborhood, or the public good, much less a substantial detriment.
So now, do you have an opinion as to whether the relief can be granted without substantial impairment to the city's zone plan and the zoning ordinance?
In my opinion, there will be absolutely no impairment, much less a substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance of the city of New Brunswick.
All right, I have no further questions of Mr. Clark, and if there are questions from the board, we would invite those now.
Are there any questions from board members or board professionals? You have no questions at this time. Dan, do you want to move on to public comment?
Certainly, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. At, at this time, the the city of New Brunswick Planning Board is opening up this hearing, the hearing on this amended site plan for public comment for up to five minutes for any person. So if you would wish to become on a list of speakers, please announce yourself, and I will put you on a list of speakers, and you will get five minutes to speak once I'm done putting the list together. If you are on the phone, you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're on the computer, you can unmute yourself with the little microphone button. So it's open for anyone who wishes to get on a list of public speakers.
Steph Brody.
Mike Crawford.
Alexa Harris with one R.
All right, so that's three. Anyone else? Last call? Saying none, we have three speakers. Going in alphabetical order, first person is Steph Brody. Let me get the timer ready. Arvin, do I have to swear them in? I forgot. Arvin, do I have to swear them in? I forgot.
It's for cross-examination only, no, but if, uh, she wishes to present any testimony, she will have to be sworn in.
Can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
Mm-hmm. My name is Steph Brody, uh, B.R.O.D.Y.
Thank you. Uh, your, uh, your five minutes begin now.
Okay. Hello, my name is Steph Brody. I'm a sophomore at Rutgers and the leader of the Rutgers Students for Environmental Awareness Club Sustainable Transportation Initiative. My parents met in the city. I was born on Robert Wood Johnson, and my family is from Somerset and Franklin, so I've grown up visiting New Brunswick often. I have a better understanding of the city than the average student.
Interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, it would appear that there are no questions. It's a comment, uh, if you'd like to be sworn in, Ms. Brody.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, would you please swear her in?
Certainly. Um, do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
All right, you can continue.
Ms. Brody, please state your record, uh, your address for the record.
Eleven Overlook Road, White House Station, New Jersey.
Thank you.
I feel I have a better understanding of the city than the average student who visited for the first time on their college tour. Today, I'm here to speak about pedestrian safety and bike infrastructure in Hub City. In two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, two pedestrians died each year. They should not be. Sidewalks and crosswalks need to become safer. Bike lanes also need to become safer. The George Street and Nielsen Street bike lanes are not safe enough, and there are not enough bike lanes, especially for inhabitants of the city. A bike lane on Somerset Street or Front Street would decrease traffic and emissions. According to your website, you are interested in smart growth. This means you would be willing to take actions which will make New Brunswick safer and more accessible for pedestrians and bikers and lower the emissions of the city. That's why we are asking you to consider applying for a complete streets grant. The deadline is February eleventh. If the application is accepted, this would provide funds for the city to improve our streets and make them safer and cleaner. I understand if you do not want to apply, but I hope that bringing this up, this discussion will make you examine the lack of safe bike lanes and sidewalks in the city. Thank you.
All right, um, next up is, uh, Mike Crawford. Are you there?
Yeah, I am. I, I realized I entered in at the wrong time that I wanted to speak, I saw a pass. Sorry.
Alexa Harris?
Uh, yes, I have one question and also a comment. Um, so I'm going to ask my question before I get sworn in. Um, for those who are members of the public, including myself, who are not, uh, used to attending public board meetings, could you explain what the executive board meeting was, uh, that was in the beginning of this, like what, what goes on in there, um?
Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt.
Yeah.
This is an opportunity for you to comment or ask questions of this applicant's witnesses or comment on the application. There is a public comment portion that is open at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, so, okay, but I, I had asked this question in the beginning, and someone was told that the chairman would come back and explain that, so I, I was hoping to ask that now.
Right, that would be for the public comment portion at the end of the meeting.
Okay. So, right now, it's just only comments about, um, the agenda item that was just discussed.
This application.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I, I have no other witnesses, uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, and actually, I believe, uh, the, uh, comments from Ms. Brody probably were intended to be during the public portion at the end of the meeting, her very articulate, um, presentation. Uh, puts a comment on our application, and certainly, it's great to see these, uh, young folks, uh, engaged. Uh, they're our future. Uh, but that's our case. Uh, I don't want to belabor our testimony. Uh, you know, it's a really de minimis change occasion by, uh, you know, a field change due to a, uh, a building foundation that can't be moved. Uh, it was a great application last October when you approved it. And for all intents and purposes, it's really the same application with the same good screening and, and all the other items as discussed by the applicant's professionals. We respectfully request that you, uh, grant this amended approval and the variance relief.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Uh, do I have a, a motion of, uh, regarding the, uh, site plan amendment to relocate this previously approved?
Mr. Chairman?
Storage system?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, it would be appropriate at this time for the board to have board discussion and any conditions to be written to the record.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mrs. Katie. I can read the conditions if you're ready.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Mrs. Katie Pennell, Principal Planner for the city of New Brunswick. Should the board act favorably on this application, recommend the following conditions of approval. Um, compliance with the terms of the city engineering report dated February third, two thousand and twenty-two. Payment of a site performance bond to the New Brunswick Department of Engineering if required. Um, submission of a site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in an amount determined by this city engineer if required. Payment of any water and sewer connection fees to New Brunswick Water Utility. Issueance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. The applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting of the city engineering department prior to commencement of any construction. Compliance with the terms of the Big Knoll Consulting Group date, report dated February fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Planning review escrow funded for all anticipated post-approval reviews. Payment of any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to the development or use of this project. Payment of any outstanding taxes due and water sewer fees to the city of New Brunswick. Middlesex County Planning Board Approval or Waiver, Freehold Soil Conservation District Approval or Waiver. Submission, um, of approval or waiver from any agency having jurisdiction. Submission of an engineering site plan to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the time of the hearing. Um, compliance with the city's water service system ordinance, all utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at sole expense, all utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary encroachment of the public right-of-way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done on site unless an encroachment for same into the public right-of-way shall be approved by city council. Streets will be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works shall cause the streets to be cleaned as so directed. Tracking patch will be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks for the direction of the city engineer. And then all conditions of previously granted approvals shall apply here. And the applicant is seeking amended preliminary and final site plan as well as a, um, bulk variance for front yard setback, and that's all I have.
Uh, thank you, Katie. Assuming this is the proper time to entertain a motion to amend this, uh, relocated, uh, gasoline storage system? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Uh, I think we need to repeat that. I, I don't think we got that right, unless you heard that, Dan. Who made the motion?
I did not. I did not hear that.
Who motioned to approve?
This is Ivan. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, and who seconded?
This is Zach Wright, second.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, uh, Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Anthony Camioni?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I've taken the Thank you. I've taken the liberty of preparing a resolution of approval for the board to consider. It has been posted on the, uh, website, so the members of the public will also have an opportunity to review it as the board members have. If the, uh, board, uh, is ready to move on the motion itself, I'm sorry, on the resolution, uh, motion would be appropriate. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Ito. I did note, if you look at item number eight, uh, I believe the day was supposed to be February fourth, twenty-two for the Big Knell report. If there was just a typographical error, if you could just check that as to the final form. We will make that correction, Mr. Uh, Ms. Morse. Other than that, we appreciate, uh, the board's consideration, uh, construction. It's a critical time. And we would request that you, uh, we thank board council for preparing, uh, preparing this resolution and ask that you approve same this evening so that we can continue marching forward with this project.
Make a motion to approve the resolution with a date correction.
You have a second?
Anthony Camioni, second.
Ivan Adorno?
Yes.
Dana Lopez?
Yes.
Anthony Camioni?
Yes.
Zach Wright?
Yes.
Bob Cardica?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. Everybody stay safe, and the applicant's team will be logging off at this time. Thanks again.
Thank you. I think at this time, I'm going to turn this back over to, uh, Chair Castaneda.
Thank you very much. And so we're going to be moving on to B, Amendments to Title sixteen Land Development Code. Miscellaneous amendments to Title sixteen Land Development Code relating to minor site plan application fees. Permitting small, fully conforming projects to receive approval from the Minor Site Plan Committee and site plan exemption, uh, for small projects meeting certain criteria. I'm assuming that this is, uh, you'll be presenting, Mr. Dominguez?
Uh, that is correct.
Dan, I just, I, Matt Ferguson, I'm back on the call. Just wanted that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Chairman, may I swear in, uh, Mr. Dominguez?
Please do so.
Hey, Mr. Dominguez, if you raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm testimony brought to give this board should be the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth? Mr. Chairman, the witness has been sworn.
Thank you. You can go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
All right, give me one second to just hold myself. There you go. Good evening, members of the board. Uh, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, the, uh, the city has referred to you, uh, propose the, uh, the Title sixteen Land Development Code, uh, which is, uh, which governs, uh, our site plans and, uh, things of that nature. Uh, this is not zoning, uh, although they are often intertwined as, uh, the Land Development Code dictates how the board operates and, uh, what criteria, uh, designates a site plan, minor site, site plan exemptions, among several other things. Uh, tonight, we have three, technically four amendments, if you've, uh, looked at the, uh, actual language of the proposed ordinance changes. Um, and so I'll, I'll just get right through them, and I'll start, uh, at the bottom of the proposed ordinance changes, but that would be the primary, uh, with the memorandum that I, uh, I sent around. Uh, so the first thing would be to, uh, get rid of the current, uh, minor site plan fee. Uh, currently, it's five hundred dollars per minor site plan. The minor site plan criteria, even prior to this potential amendment here, is, uh, sort of varies very large minor site plans as well as very, uh, small minor site plan. It, it kind of runs the gamut. They typically operate on the smaller end of things, but just because it says minor site plan doesn't, can't be a, quite a huge development. Um, so the proposal, elimination of the five hundred dollar fee and to create a three-tier, uh, minor site plan fee structure. It would bump up the base minor site plan fee, uh, from five hundred to six hundred dollars, uh, for properties that are on parcels that are less, equal to or less than ten thousand square feet. Uh, it would set a minor site plan fee of double the six hundred dollars, uh, for, uh, minor site plans on greater than ten thousand square feet. And it would triple them for site plans, uh, with four or more dwelling units. Uh, no, sorry, with five or more, greater than four, um, as, uh, assessments for site plan, uh, when involving residences typically get more complex in terms of how you, uh, you assess site. Um, so that's the first sort of component, a reconfiguration of the fee structure for minor site plans. Um, now going to the top of the proposed ordinance language, uh, no. No, we'll just, we'll just, we'll just follow the memos, uh, and work backwards on the ordinance language. Uh, the, the next, uh, option, uh, is consideration is, uh, for what is permitted under minor site plan. Uh, the criteria here is to permit, uh, wholly conforming projects on seventy-five hundred square feet or less, so they have no variances whatsoever, uh, or R S I S exceptions. And, uh, in addition to that, have at least five feet, uh, five-foot, uh, side and rear setbacks. Uh, so that would imply that if, for example, it was in a a zone that didn't allow, that didn't require, uh, those setbacks, that they to be, uh, entitled to this benefit, if see it that way, they would still need to have these, this back, uh, in order to, uh, to fit the criteria. Uh, the city sees this as a uh, small projects that are wholly conforming, uh, would hopefully, you know, it's sort of a waste of the board's time to have them come to the board when they're completely by right. And so this would speed up the process bureaucratically, uh, for the developer and for the city. It would also, uh, create an incentive for, uh, more developers. Maybe, uh, their applications a little bit, shave off a few variant, wholly conforming. Uh, so we get, uh, further, uh, conformance with the code, and, uh, the developer gets more of a peace of mind that they can vote a minor site plan if they're wholly conforming. There's no reason to, to vote in the negative. They get to proceed. Sort of a win-win across the board. Uh, and then finally, uh, to, uh, create a site plan except, exception, uh, for, uh, small changes that create no variances. And, uh, do not add more than two and a half percent, uh, or two hundred square feet to the newly developed area. This would encompass very small additions, uh, certain outdoor structures, uh, things of that nature, uh, like, uh, for example, dumpster screening is, uh, is one thing that, that comes to mind, uh, et cetera. Uh, and that there would be an exception such that it would not, uh, affect any parking or circulation and not create any new dwelling units or bedrooms in order to, uh, to this, uh, this, uh, trigger for, uh, complete site plan exemption. Um, and that's, those are kind of the, uh, that's the overview. I thought that was pretty quick. They're relatively minor, uh, proposals. And, uh, that, that is my presentation. The board has any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Any questions from board members?
It was thorough, man.
Mr. Dominguez, just, uh, is this, uh, this is conform with other, with other, I guess, other, uh, cities or townships?
Yeah, yeah, this is, uh, this is quite conforming, uh, but i- in comparison to other cities, uh, this is probably still a little bit more restrictive, uh, than a place like Newark or Jersey City, uh, which have a lot more flexibility for these types of exceptions. Uh, but, uh, th- this isn't out of line.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, we can put it up to public. Mr. Ito?
Thank you. If there are any members of the public that wish to comment or ask questions of Mr. Dominguez, the witness in this matter, uh, I'm going to ask that they, in orderly fashion, identify themselves. I'll put them down on the list. Each member will, of the public that would like to comment or ask questions will have five minutes. If there's anyone that would like to ask questions, I would ask that you, if you're on the phone, hit star six to unmute yourself. If you're on a computer or tablet, hit the mute, unmute button. Please identify yourself.
Hello, uh, I am Andrew Zupardi.
Thank you, Mr. Zupardi. I'll put you down on the list. Is there any other members of the public that wish to ask questions or comment?
Yeah, Charlie Cradville, can you hear me?
I can, Mr. Cradville. Thank you. Are there any other members? Mr. Chairman, hearing no other members, if I may proceed in reverse alphabetical order, uh, Mr. Zupardi, if you would, uh, please raise your right hand. If you're affirm the testimony brought to give this board should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir, I'll be.
Yes.
And, uh, you have five minutes. You may begin.
I just have a quick question. Could you go over what the, what the minor site plan, like, entails in general, like the differences with that against other types of site plans?
Certainly. Um, so, Certainly. So by land use law, every pality can set certain criteria for what can self define what is a minor site plan. And so the city by ordinance has a minor site plan ordinance that says X, Y, and Z are exempted from major site plan. This usually results in some slightly fewer items that they have to produce, typically, you know, sort of like environmental statements and the like, or traffic statements are pretty much universal for major and, and minors. The fees are smaller. The, the process is faster. So for example, if you have a major site plan in New Brunswick, you apply, you go to the technical advisory committee and then you may go to several advisory committees and then you end at the, and that's when basin is heard and voted on. Minor site plan, you apply and you proceed directly to the Minor Site Plan Committee, which is comprised mostly of the technical advisory committee. It's a small meeting, basically based on the technicalities of the application where, you know, myself, the city engineer, and a couple of other departments essentially vote on the application and move it along in that meeting. And then that's the end. And then, see.
That's it.
Mr. Zupardi, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask for Mr. Cradville?
Yeah, go right ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Cradville, if you'd raise your right arm. Do you swear or affirm testimony? Give this board? Should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir, I do.
Mr. Cradville, you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to raise a procedural issue. Who is the board's, who on this board is a member of the Environmental Commission?
Is that a question for this witness?
Yeah, I think he would, he'd be able to help with that.
Well, Mr. Eitholz, I don't, I don't believe that that is relevant to this item in question, but that person, I'll, I'll answer it anyway, has not been, that situation has not been resolved yet. We hope that by the time this body meets next month, that we will have solved that.
Okay. I will just say for the record, I believe it's legally required for this board to have someone from the Environmental Commission on it. And unfortunately, due to avoidable mistakes that were made by members of the board, the, the joint member resigned and resigned from both boards, actually. And I think that's really unfortunate and I'm concerned that, you know, the required dual role is not being fulfilled.
I'm starting, do you have any other questions for Mr. Dominguez?
No, no.
Okay.
Can I make my comments or no?
Those comments would be more appropriate for the public portion. Mr. Chairman, if there are any other questions or any comments related to the presentation of the amendments to Title 16 Land Development Code? Mr. Cradville?
No, that's all. I just think that the board is, board is playing fast and loose with the law. That's all.
Mr. Chairman, that would conclude the public portion. Motion to close that public portion and the board to opine and make a recommendation and a referral back to council on the proposed amendments to Title 16 Land Development Code.
Thank you, Mr. Eitholz. And so can I get, unless there is more board discussion, and I'll open it up to that. If not, I'd like to get a motion to send this up to council. Can I get a motion to then send this to council?
Bob Cardica.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Second, this is Zach Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. If I may, roll call. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Good for the platform, right? All right, thank you.
Mr. Ferguson?
My vote is yes. Call, call in user eight is creating some background noise. I'm not, that's why I think we're having some difficulty, but my vote is yes.
Mr. Dominguez, can we mute caller eight?
Done.
Mr. Adorno?
Yes.
Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Ms. Wright? I'm sorry, Mr. Wright. My apologies.
I got you. Yes.
Mr. Camianni?
Yes.
Mr. Cardica?
Yes.
And Chairman Castaneda? Chairman Castaneda?
Yes, sorry, I thought I muted unmuted.
And recommendation will be made to council to adopt the amendments to Title 16 Land Development Code without further comment.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Moving on to Section 9, Other Matters of Interest to the Public. Before we move into this, where Mr. Dominguez will give further instruction, I just wanted to stress that, that these comments, that this opportunity is for people to make comments that are within the purview of the planning board, number one. I will also ask people to refrain from using abusive language. Let's keep it civil. It's okay that we have differences of opinions. We definitely want to hear your opinions, but let's do it in a, in a civil matter. Mr. Dominguez, at this point, oh, I think he's having connectivity issues, but Mr. Dominguez, if you can hear me, if you can provide the rest of the instruction for...
I can't hear you, if you can hear me.
I can, we can hear you.
I, I was just attaching from, from the camera and I think it flagged it as a connectivity issue. Let's just jump in. I, Mr., yeah, I believe that the next step is to go into public comment. Just give me one second to grab a piece of paper to take down a, a list. All right, I, I am ready. If you can open it into, what would you call it? What, what, what is it called in the matters of interest to the public, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So Chairman Castaneda, are we formally in that session? I just, okay, all right. Yeah, all right. So I will, yes.
The instructions, yeah.
All right, so we are now in matters of interest to the public. If there's any member of the public who wishes to comment, general public comment, this is the time. Please state your name and I will put you on a list of speakers and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Anyone at all? I know we will put you on a list of speakers. We are now taking names for the list. If you are on the telephone, you'll have to unmute yourself with star six. If you are on the computer, you can unmute yourself with the little microphone button. So is there anyone out there who would like to be put on a list of speakers?
Yes, Alexa Harris, Harris with one R.
All right, Alexa Harris. All right.
Michael Crawford.
Michael. Rockford. Charlie Cradville. Are there any other persons who would like to speak? Anyone at all? Last call? Seeing none. Chairman, the first speaker we have is Mr. Michael Rockford.
I believe.
Mr. Rockford.
Are you, are you going in?
Going alphabetical order. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, just making sure. Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Rockford, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and then we'll proceed?
Sure. Michael Rockford, C R O C K F O R D, 100 Jersey Avenue. I, I'm, I'm one of, as many of you know, or some of you know, I'm one of the tenants that is in the process of being evicted from the spaces at 100 Jersey Avenue and it's not resolving very well for some of us. I'm, I'm basically, I'm, I'm closer to just closing up the shop completely. I'm not really sure what the future is. I'm still looking. I'm packing things up as if I'm going somewhere. The, the reason I'm packing up is because we were served notice about a month ago to vacate in 30 days. I know that the eviction process takes probably another month or so after that, or, you know, at this city council meeting, the lawyer for Accurate Builders basically claimed, stated rather, that, you know, he was in full compliance with the agreement made between the city of New Brunswick and, and the LLC that he's representing. My, my question for you guys is, is really procedural, like, because I'm not sure if I have any recourse at this point. I'm going, I'm still pursuing like some recourse, whether just getting help from the developer to move, like financial help, which I'm, you know, I'm hopeful for, but I'm not that hopeful for, but, or, you know, just my network of support. But my procedural question for you guys is, I would really encourage you very strongly to create some kind of resolution in your processes that address displaced, I know that there's good language, or halfway good language, at least on residential displacement, but there, there seems to be, and I looked at redevelopment law and, you know, I'm not a lawyer, you know, but there's very little language on, on displacement of, of businesses when there in fact is no public use of that property. And one of the things I wanted to notice in concert with you is that, it was curious, the discussion about the, the private park that, that the developer is proposing. And basically, if the private park was indeed a public park, then, then we might have some leverage to require the developer to provide for relocation assistance. And, but the developer seems to want private control of that area. And I wonder if that's part of the reason. I'm also concerned that, you know, there, there's been no discussion, or at least no answers about amendments to the agreement between Accurate LLC and the city. Other municipalities have actually created amendments with Accurate in their redevelopment plans. I found at least one that I'm sure of in Emerson. It also is notable that Emerson is in a lawsuit with Accurate Builders over their development scheme. They're hung up on all sorts of delays and other problems. That's something to pay attention to. But I, I'm, the, the real, the real thing that I really want to address, and I hope that you will address, is to put some permanent language to address the needs of displaced businesses. And I looked at the old videos and there is some tiny mention of the businesses affected, but the developer talked about office space. He actually said office space, but not industrial space. And the vast majority of this, of the displaced businesses are in fact industrial, not office. And, and there seems to be like a little bit slippery, slippery representation of, of, of who is in that building. Some of the, some of the, some of the city officials seem to not even know that there were occupants in the buildings in question. And so, so I'm not really sure. Like I said, I don't know what my future is. I, I'm worried. I don't have a plan. I don't have an alternative career plan, you know, I don't. I, I'm, I've reached out to Mr. Dominguez and I appreciate him answering my phone calls, but so far I haven't received any construct, not constructive. I mean, he, he'd offered to help try to find a space, but that, that's the least of my worries. Just, you know.
One minute.
We need, we, thank you. Thank you for the one-minute warning, because I never know where I am. I would, I would, I just, I can't underscore it enough. There has to be some provision for addressing in the construction of a plan, in the negotiation of a plan, for all the parties affected, the, all the affected parties in, in a redevelopment agreement. We were completely blindsided by this whole process, even though there's public meetings, but we can't be expected to be paying attention to these, these public meetings. Like, I, I'm a reasonably aware citizen and I have no idea what this process is until now, you know, very little idea. And, and that, that's pretty much what I had to say. I really would appreciate, I've, I've asked for copies of the redevelopment agreement from the housing authority. I know that's not your purview. And that was last week and I haven't even received an email saying that, yes, we are on it. Like, I, I feel kind of stonewalled. That's all I have to say for right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. And just as a point of clarification, Mr. Eitholz, there's nothing that this board can do with respects to this particular situation, correct?
It would appear that the redevelopment law, which is the state statute and state law, preempts the field. This board cannot supersede the state law.
Thank you. So unfortunately, we don't have the purview to do anything at this point, but I would recommend working with, continuing to work with Mr. Dominguez. We wish you all the best. Sorry.
Other towns have made amendments, and so that's what I'm asking about. Other towns have made amendments after the agreement was made. So there is a, amend ordinances. That's the governing body.
Right. We, we, this is not a request that you can make.
This, this is the, this is the sort of back and forth. Everyone sort of shifts responsibility for something onto a different body. Okay, I understand, but you understand my point here. Like, it's, it's, it's a, it's a dot, it's...
Your point has been taken and I believe it's been answered, sir.
I believe not, but thank you.
Okay. We get the next person?
Next, yes. Next up, alphabetically. Alexa Harris, are you there?
I am. Hi.
Alexa, can you please state your name, spell your last name for the record?
My name is Alexandria Harris. The last name is spelled H A R I S. Again, Harris with one R.
You may begin. You have five minutes, starting now.
Good evening, New Brunswick Planning Board and members of the public. My name is Alexandria Harris, student at Rutgers and third-year resident of New Brunswick. I have friends and family living in New Brunswick, and as an advocate for my community, I express my earnest interest in safe bike lanes to be further developed within our city, within complete street design and advisory lanes. I am a low-income student, self-dependent, and use public transportation as my mode of transportation, getting one place to another, and wish this would also include biking. In light of the pandemic and social distancing, I can say as a Walmart employee, a department manager, we never had bikes like on the shelves. They were always continuously sold out because many individuals, including myself and my cousin who lives in New Brunswick, and many other family members and children, bought bikes to ride and enjoy themselves, but it is not safe to ride in New Brunswick. We do not currently have the infrastructure and people have stopped or will not ride within, without the thoughtful and sufficient bike lanes. Our city is called Hub City, formerly Hope City, but unfortunately, at this moment, we are not either right now. We are not a hub of progress, connectivity, and accessibility. I work, live, study, and volunteer here, as do many other residents, not just the student population, but our families, children, local business owners, asylum seekers, low-income families who do not have cars, and black and brown communities that do not get the representation they deserve. We can be leading an example alongside Jersey City, Boston, Massachusetts, and Portland, Oregon, in public health and accessibility. Biking provides a free and healthy mode of transportation as well as a carbon-free method of getting to one place to, from one place to another. I ridden up and down Sedam Street twice to visit families and friends and stopped. Why? Because I was scared for my life. There was no infrastructure that is sustainable and I felt extremely unsafe. Sure, there are two lines on the first blocks of Sedam Street closest to the university, but that does not serve the local people, such as myself and my friends and family. Furthermore, the hierarchy... Furthermore, the hierarchy of the planning on these bike lanes is emphasized on the vehicles. Why must bike riders ride between the parked and moving vehicles? In essence, two sides of moving vehicles. Improvements of the bike lanes include rearranging the lane to be right next to the sidewalk, then parked cars, then moving traffic, as well as with barriers. I ask for the planning board to truly consider and expend energies such as public engagement and collaboration with the public and the town council for the expansion and improvement of bike lanes and public transportation. The sites and streets in particular discussed among some community members include College Avenue, the Bridge to Boyd Park and Paul Robison, Sedam Street, French Street, Jones Avenue, Livingston Avenue, and Nielsen. Let us collectively bring the city and its people together for a future, a better future with less emissions and more care and accessibility for all. I would appreciate a contact from the planning board to help with this endeavor. Thank you. I also have a few other comments. I would like to speak on the behalf of my two fellow members of the community in New Brunswick, Melissa and Maria Dominguez, who have lived in New Brunswick for all their lives with their family. Melissa has commented that drivers do not respect the current bike lanes, and therefore does not feel safe riding. And Maria Dominguez has said she would like to see the bike lanes be next to the sidewalk and then the parked cars and the vehicles, which has been promoted in urban planning as well. So it's not just professionals, but also the public are commenting on this. I would also like to add in support to Mike of 100 Jersey Avenue. And that this is someone's income and livelihood, and there needs to be permanent language. And yes, you say that it's not within your domain, but you can advocate and be a liaison to the town council who can work out an ordinance
One minute.
to protect the people and engage all the affected parties. I would also like to add and support what the comment made by Charlie Cradville, that there should be a dual member on both boards of the Environmental Commission and the planning board. And it does not sit well with me that we're avoiding this topic, as well as my question that I'm going to ask for the third time. I would like to know, since I'm just confused, right, about this, like, what happens in the executive board meeting? Because for those who just don't know, if that could just simply be answered, please, that would be appreciated.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Eitholz, I think it would be okay to answer procedurally what happens and why we go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, as I indicated earlier, we go into executive session, and the agenda is set. It's a matter of public record that we are going to be going into public, I'm sorry, executive session to have a discussion. And that discussion has to be one of the nine enumerated reasons that we're permitted to go in. And this is for pending, ongoing litigation, and to update the board on the status of that litigation and litigation tactics.
Thank you for answering the question.
Thank you for your comments.
Quick question. This is Matt Ferguson. Maybe Dan or Katie, could you reach out to Alexa regarding the bike plans? I know we've added bike lanes across the city. And to answer her questions about those specific initiatives, could one of you reach out to her and talk to her about that?
Certainly. Alexa, my email is Our office line is 732-745-5050. Feel free to call.
Yeah, if you could just repeat both your email and your number once or twice. Slowly, please. So Ddominguez, I see. Okay. At cityofnewbrunswick.
Dot org.
Dot org. And your phone number?
Yes. 732-745-5050.
5050. And do you have, is there an extension number I can use to reach you?
I don't give out my extension.
Okay.
So you'll call, you'll call the main line, and they'll be directed to me. I'm very open. I answer my calls.
Okay.
It's not like I'm hiding. I just don't give out my extension.
Understandable. Thank you. And you are the chairman of this board, correct?
No, I'm the board secretary and the planning director.
Board secretary and planning director. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez, can we get our next speaker?
Yes. The next and final speaker is Mr. Charlie Cradville. Mr. Cradville, can you, well, I think you already did that. Let me just get the clock going. Mr. Cradville, your five minutes begin now.
Thank you, sir. I was kind of shocked at the last meeting when Mr. Cardica had to speak up to get the minutes revised to reflect his no vote on an item. You know, I wanted to ask if anybody could shed a little light on how a no vote could be recorded as a yes vote. What happened there? Hello?
Yes, hello. Mr. Cradville, that was a technical error. It was, it was fixed.
Okay, pretty big error. I, I, I think, you know, Mr. Cardica does a good job. He really looked at these applications fairly, and, and, you know, he made it clear he wanted to vote no. He shouldn't have to, to, you know, make corrections like that. The minutes should reflect the proper votes that were taken. I already asked about the lack of an environmental commission member. I'll point out that the Environmental Commission is meeting right now. So even if there was a dual member, they would be hard pressed to participate in both meetings. Any plan of, I mean, Mr. Dominguez said that he hopes to have someone meeting that legal requirement by the next meeting. Is it going to be one of the people who's on the board now, or is there going to be a new person appointed? And, you know, quite frankly, why is the board conducting business without the legally required member of the Environmental Commission?
Mr. Dominguez, I think Mr. Dominguez has already answered that we're going to be looking into it and trying to rectify it. And so we'll wait until next meeting to see where we are.
Okay. And that requirement, does that stem from a city ordinance or a state statute?
That I am not aware of. Mr. Eitholz?
I believe it's a state statute.
Thank you.
Okay. So this board should be on notice that you're violating a state statute, conducting hearings on applications, and apparently changing the ordinances of the city or recommending changes to the ordinance of the city without a member of the Environmental Commission. Now, how did we get here? We got here because this board rushed to approve a application at 10:30 at night when a objector had hired an attorney and never got to present their case. They got bamboozled by the board, and Mr. Petrellino, another good public servant, said he wasn't comfortable moving forward until a full and fair hearing could be had where that objector could make their case. Suzanne Sikora Ludwig and Chris Stellatella, two members of this board who, for whatever reason, chose not to show up tonight, moved and seconded and rushed this board into making a huge mistake. That application was approved because Suzanne Sikora Ludwig did not have enough respect for her colleague to hear him out and let his request be fully adjudicated. And as I warned, as I cautioned, as I feared, the board has now been sued. And that is why you had to have a closed session today. And folks can look up that lawsuit on New Jersey E Courts, Kamamas Family LP versus New Brunswick Planning Board. And an even, and an additional consequence of that terrible decision by Ms. Sikora Ludwig is that Mr. Petrellino quit the board, and he quit the Environmental Commission because he had been disrespected by her. And I think that it would only be appropriate for Ms. Sikora Ludwig and Mr. Stellatella to resign from this board and be replaced with qualified people who are willing to give the time it takes to give every application a full and fair hearing and not rush to approve things at 10:30 at night and ignore voices of people who want to be heard and have made steps to object. You know, I've cautioned that in the pandemic and really as a result of the scheme to take the Lincoln Annex School, the board has started to roll back the public's ability to comment, made all these new rules about, you know, limiting time. And you even went so far as to take an objector who hired an attorney and tried to tell him that he had to make all of his cross-examinations on four witnesses in five minutes. I'm sorry, did I get a one-minute warning? I didn't hear. Do I have a minute left? I'd like, I'd like a minute, because I was expecting a one-minute warning. You gave other people a one-minute warning. I'd like to ask about the master plan of the city. It is now well over 10 years since the last master plan was approved. Why hasn't it been done? Isn't the statute say 10 years?
Again, this is public comment. We'll, we'll see if we can get that, that answer for you. But at this point, we're going to move on. Any other comments?
It's a pretty big deal, the master plan. This is really inappropriate. You know, 100 Jersey Avenue, this situation is absurd. You know, these folks keep coming to the meetings and keep told that, that they're at the wrong place. Where's the right place for them to go? Why is the, why is the planning board turning them away? They came here tonight, and I think they, they, they made a good case. Why, why can't you support them?
Mr. Cradville, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, you didn't answer my questions for the record.
I believe that was all the speakers for tonight.
That's correct, Mr. Castaneda.
Thank you. Then moving on to our, to adjournment. And so can I get a motion to adjourn?
Anthony Camioni, motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.